Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me call to order the West Covina City Council. It's Tuesday, April 15th. We will begin tonight with our invocation led by Pastor Kelly Dupie from the West Covina. He's our West Covina Police Chaplain and also pastor from Faith Community Church here in West Covina. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Councilmember Warshaw. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for your presence here with tonight. We thank you, God, for the opportunity and the blessing to live in the great city of West Covina and ask, Lord, that you would be with all who serve us, Lord, as the residents, those who work and live here in this great city. Father, tonight, God, we ask your blessing upon, of course, our police and fire departments and all of the men and women that serve in those areas, God, that you would bless their efforts and give them safety as well as success in their missions. Father, tonight, be with our city council as they debate and examine and make decisions that affect the lives of all of us. So, God, tonight, we praise you and thank you, Lord, for the wisdom that you're going to give them and for your presence here directing this meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please remain seated or place your right hand over your heart and follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Pastor Kelly. City Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Hereford.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sykes.
Here.
Councilman Spence.
Here.
Councilmember Toma.
Here.
Councilmember Warshaw.
Here.
We were in closed session. City Attorney, do we have anything to report on a closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the successor agency and the city council met in closed session to consider four cases, litigation cases. City of West Covina versus Hassan Imports Partnership, Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number KC-048157, two bankruptcy court cases in re-Hassan Imports Partnership debtor, few different cases with two different case numbers, but they're involving the same parties. The council and the agency received a status report on the current status of that litigation, some upcoming motions in those cases, and some potentials for settlement strategies that was discussed by the council with the special counsel, and there was no reportable action taken on those items. This is my report.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, any changes to the agenda tonight?
There is no changes to the agenda tonight.
Okay, thank you. We have a few presentations tonight. I'd like to call forward our Police Chief Dave Faulkner, who will introduce our newest police officer, Fred Yielding. Chief Faulkner.
Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce our newest officer, Officer Yielding. Why don't you come on up here? Officer Yielding has been with us since the 25th of March when he graduated the academy. He's 31 years old. He's married to Julian, his wife, which is sitting in the front row here. She's a teacher down in Orange County, has a one-year-old son, as you can tell, Kayden, and I'm sure they'd like to join us up here in a few minutes. Fred grew up in San Clemente, currently resides there, and he enjoys playing golf, running, and surfing. He's got a BS degree in Criminal Justice Administration, and prior to law enforcement, he worked in a construction company that he shared with his father. He was hired out of the academy pre-service, meaning that he was already in the academy. We were fortunate enough to get him. Graduated fifth in his class. We're very, very proud to have him add on to the police department, and he's in training now. And I'd certainly like to congratulate you on your addition to the department, give you a chance to kind of introduce your family.
Thank you. Like you said, my name's Fred Yielding. I'm gonna hold back here, buddy. This is my son, Kayden, and my wife, Julie, and we came from San Clemente. And it's a great honor for me to be a part of this department and represent this city. My experience so far has been that this department is one big family, and that relates with the city as well and how the city is run. I couldn't imagine being anywhere else, and it's a great honor for me to be a part of this department and to be a member of this city. So, thank you.
Proud to have you.
Thank you, sir.
I know I'm not gonna let you have a chance to speak. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Hold on for just a second. I think the mayor would like to...
There you go, sir.
Thank you. We don't have anything to present you, but congratulations and welcome to our force. It's a great addition, so thank you very much for seeking employment with the West Covina Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you want a picture or not?
We're good.
Go.
Thanks for that.
Okay, Councilmember Toma's gonna join me for this one. And I don't know James real well, but I know he's a runner, so I know that he picked this up, I think, through the newspaper or through the running network. Could I have Lenore Marino, please, come forward? Oh my gosh, Lenore's a little tiny thing. She's gonna be recognized tonight for achievements in long-distance running. Do you have a coach here tonight, too? Why don't you have your coach come forward, too? Okay? She's a graduate of West Covina High School, where she played softball and ran cross-country. After graduating, she attended Mount San Antonio College, where she continued to run cross-country. During her time at Mount Sack, she set the school record in the 5,000 and 10,000-meter runs. For the past couple of years, she has been studying movement sports science at the University of Laverne and competing in cross-country. She runs 65 to 80 miles a week. Wow. And recently, she competed in the NCAA Division III National Championships in the 5,000-meter run. She finished first with a time of 16 minutes and 32.85 seconds. She has won numerous accolades and honors, but I'd also like to point out that she was named the NCAA Division III West Regional Female of the Year. Wow, what an honor. Let's congratulate Lenore on her accomplishments with a round of applause. Let me have James say a few words, too.
Thank you, Mayor. This caught my attention when I saw the article in the San Gabriel Valley Tribune about Lenore's championship run, and what stood out to me was the opening line where it said that she was a good runner in high school but with lots of potential. And so, that really inspired me also because it showed that either, I'm speculating, that you either got some more maturity and motivation to really commit yourself to running in college, and you probably also got some outstanding coaching in college as well. And so, your achievement with the national indoor record plus the 10,000, I understand that in another event, she ran the fastest time that's been set in like eight years or more than eight years, something like that. So, she's really done incredibly well, and it's very inspiring to me as a casual, not serious runner, but congratulations very much on your achievement.
Thank you. Lenore, would you like to say a few words?
I've lived here all my life, so I'm very honored to be representing West Covina. I couldn't have done it without my family and my coaches and everything, so I'm just very blessed and honored to be here and be recognized. Thank you.
Well, we are extremely proud, and we want to thank James for bringing this to our attention, and we'd like to present you with just a little proclamation saying, "Great job," and thank you for representing the city of West Covina proudly. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Push the couch just way towards us. Move the mayor out of sight.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Did you want to say something?
No. Just a little too many words.
Thank you. My name is Brian George. This is my first year coaching at Laverne, but I was very blessed to be coaching Lenore this year. She's an incredibly hard worker, and your mayor was right. She typically runs about 70 to 80 miles a week. On some of the high weeks, it's even more, like 90. So, runs of 18 to 20 miles aren't uncommon for her, but she's a really hard worker, but more importantly, she's so dedicated and mature, and she's a leader on the team and a leader on the campus that we're at. So, I'm very excited about what Lenore's accomplished, and if anybody wants to watch her run, she's running at the Mount Sack Relays on Friday evening at 9:34, and so she'll be, you know, right now, she's one of the best runners in Division III. So, it's been an exciting ride for us, and we had about another six weeks of the season, and we're looking forward to the rest of it. So, thanks for having us here tonight.
Thanks again. Appreciate it. Yeah. First item on the agenda is oral communications. Speakers that wish to address the council, please fill out a yellow card, and I will call you up. You have five minutes to speak. First speaker is John Hughes.
Okay, Mayor Hereford, members of the council, city manager, staff, members of the audience, our events are approaching very soon. Our first event for muscular dystrophy is our dinner dance on May the 10th at the West Covina Else Club. Reservations are a must. I hope you'll come. We have an auction, and we're in need of auction items. Our next event is our golf tournament on June 23rd at South Hills Country Club, and then, of course, we have the 4th of July event, which has become, as far as I know, the biggest event ever in West Covina. I want to thank you personally, Steve. You've always been there, all 24 years, so I really appreciate it.
It's you, John, so thank you. We appreciate everything your family does.
And I hope you'll all come to our dinner and support us. If you have any questions, I also want to thank Chris Friedland for all of his support. And if you have any questions, you can call community service. You can contact me, but I hope to see you at our dinner dance on May the 10th, and please sign up for our golf tournament. If you know any auction items you can get us, we would appreciate it. Thanks again. God bless you all.
Thank you. Next speaker, Lloyd Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Hereford and council members. At the last meeting, I came up and I talked about a couple of contracts, one contract with our city attorney and the other contract with Squire Sanders, and the one with Squire Sanders is an invalid contract. Well, that started out in 2006 and 2011, the same thing. The latest one I have is from February the 7th, 2013. So, here is the minutes from the Special Agreement of the West Covina City Council of February 7, 2013, reporting out. It said, "The city attorney reported the following. The city council, by a vote of three to one, Sykes, no, approved the city of West Covina filing an appeal from the trial court decision in the matter of West Covina Improvement Association versus the city of West Covina. The city council further approved by a vote three to one, Sykes, no, to retain the law firm Squire Sanders and Owens in this matter, and they are to serve as a lead counsel and to work in conjunction with the city." Well, we go to, here it is, gentlemen. No signature of the mayor. We are a general law city. General law city, the mayor must sign all contracts. That's a Government Code 40602. It's the law. It's not that we can't sign it or we can't sign it. You have to sign it. I know we have an RFP out there for our legal service, you know? And as far as I'm concerned, it shouldn't matter how low the Arnold Blasman's Law Firm bids. All the bad legal advice we have been given, we shouldn't accept this low bid, because, you know, it doesn't matter if the council doesn't know, if you're a general law city, if the mayor has to sign it. Your city attorney's supposed to know that, because what it says on the West Covina website, it says, "City Attorney. The city attorney who is appointed by the city council provides legal advice and assistance to all city offices and to the city council. The city attorney represents and advises the city council, boards, and commission, officers, employees, in all matters of law pertaining to their office and official activities, prepares all proposed ordinance, resolution, and amendments, prepares or approves the form of all other legal documents." He's supposed to know this. We are working with an invalid contract, you know? And the problem with that, you know, the California Government Code Section 40602 provides a method by which a general law city can enter into a contract, and we violated it. Here it is. I'm not doing, there's no sense reading it, but what I'm hoping this council does, looks at this, and says, "You know what? We are working with an invalid contract. We should not be doing business with this law firm." And it comes down to it, under this part right here, which I could read, the courts ruled these cities had to pay, the firm had to pay the money back to the firm because it was an illegal contract. So, all in all, we paid Squire Sanders almost $13 million. I think as a city, we deserve all our money back. Thank you.
Thank you. Elsie Messman.
Mayor, council, staff, and everyone here tonight, my name is Elsie Messman, a resident of West Covina. First of all, I would like to say a few words about the parking and tour buses. Number one is why are we wasting staff's time? Number two, if they are parking on private property, that is none of our business, and we should leave it to the property owner to deal with it. Number three, I have seen buses parked on Shadow Oak Park, near the, in Shadow Oak, near the park. There is no parking signs on the street, so call the police and let them deal with it. Either they can give them a ticket, a warning, that's up to them. This is a no-brainer. We don't need any, we have bigger fishes to fry. We don't need more regulations. And as for what the attorney said today, until this is final, nobody is gonna believe it, okay? And in the Discover West Covina in January 2007 issue, it stated the city was owed $200,000 by Ziad Alhassan. This lawsuit was filed in April 2006 and is still going on, and now we have three different attorneys, and the price tag now is over $12 million and counting. When is this going to stop? With amounts like $145,000, $147,000, $175,000, $192,000, this is a month by one firm, when a lawsuit started at $200,000. I would like to know who approved these amounts and why is it still continuing? When the last council settled the lawsuit with CDM, it was filed on August 2013 and was settled before the new council took over. I believe it was over, it was $900,000. To settle a lawsuit this fast, we had to have, and we have one pending since 2006, doesn't pass the smell test. How many other lawsuits has this city settled that we don't know about? If this council does not have the backbone to stop the lawsuit, then resign. Enough is enough. The citizens and taxpayers of West Covina told the previous council they did not want the project, and the council didn't listen. Well, as you can well see, there's two of them, or three of them, that are not here today, okay? And the new council is not listening either. It's time taxpayer dollars are directed to the needs of the city, not attorneys. We need more police, code enforcement, and staff. This is just to start with. And in today's, I think, LA Times, Cudahy had to pay $22.7 million in redevelopment funds back. I wonder how much we're gonna have to pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Redholtz.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Hereford, council, and staff, and everybody here. When I was before you two weeks ago, I called for the replacement and removal of both the city manager and the city attorney. Subsequent to that, I had a meeting with the city manager at his request. It was a very informative and enlightening meeting and time well spent, and I am here to ask you to not rush to judgment, to allow him to prove to you and assure you that he is indeed the right man that you want in that seat. My position on the city attorney, however, is unchanged. I would also, since there is an RFP out for attorney services, as Mr. Johnson previously alluded, please do not be misled by a low bid. That low bid is, as we have seen, definitely made up for in never-ending litigation and thousands and thousands of billable hours. It wipes out the low bid. Also, subsequent to that, my speaking to you, some, oh, let me back up just a little bit. At that same meeting, I also laid the blame for the loss of the Chevy franchise to you guys, because it is occurring on your watch, but some communication has, that is now public, has come to my attention that points the blame in other directions. Apparently, the Chevy dealer group, who would like to have its public, you know, Sage Automotive open the Chevy dealership and keep it in West Covina at the Mazda facility, apparently, Mr. Alhassan unfortunately decided to enter the fray and basically, as stated in this correspondence, was asking for a million-dollar signing bonus, is the way they put it. And I guess he's gonna be Clayton Kershaw. He wants a signing bonus to pitch. But to me, GM has a very, at least Chevrolet division, has a very sour taste in their mouth with the years of bad relationship with Mr. Alhassan, and they are saying he is not negotiating good faith, and they really don't want nothing to do with him. So, you know, depending on who you talk to, there's a lot of blame to go around for the loss of that, for the loss of that facility. My urging to this council is to release as many documents that pertains to this litigation as you can to the public. I know there are sensitive documents that probably cannot be released, but the more the public knows about this and the more they know as to the reasons for moves on all sides, the public will then be able to come to a more informed decision and conclusion about what the heck's been going on here all these years. After all, it is our money that is being spent, as we've heard, to the tune of millions and millions of dollars all these years, at what started out, as Ms. Messman just said, a couple hundred thousand bucks. So, we need to be informed. We need to know what's going on so we can understand and come to the right conclusion. I want to use the balance of my time on another topic. It's been a few months, it's been a few months since we had the election. As you know, I was a candidate for the city clerk's office. I did not prevail. Mr. Lewis prevailed. In the candidate form that was held here, he, one of the things he pledged to do first and foremost was to work to eliminate the office for which he was elected. I have not heard or seen anything regarding that being gone forward. Perhaps he could come forward and fill us in, give us a progress report on how that's going. That was his main campaign pledge. I'd like to know how that's going. Also, in a subsequent interview after the election, he indicated that he would be appearing in front of you on a monthly basis to let you know what he was and wasn't doing. I haven't seen him in these chambers at all since he was sworn in, so I'd kind of like to know how things are going, and since he's made those pledges to the voters who elected him, I'd like to know where we stand on that, and I thank you for listening, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Dave Stewart.
If you recall, I guess it's two weeks ago when we had this subject, was the, the main subject was the rental tax or assessment. I spoke about that, however, I spoke more about the blight, the city, and what I was doing about it, if you recall. I told you I went through different tracks and kind of got an idea how much percentage was bad, how much was good. But I made a statement that night that I want to retract and do justice to the city. I said that years and years ago, I've been a resident for 56 years, years and years ago, West Covina was known as a city of beautiful homes, and I followed up by saying, "West Covina now is a city of some beautiful homes." Well, since that, two weeks has gone by, I traveled through the city a long ways, and I pretty much satisfied myself of what the problem is, but I want to state that statement again, but the first part is true. Years ago, we had many or some, a city of beautiful homes, and today, we have many, many beautiful homes in the city, and the residents should be proud of them. When you travel the city, there are a lot of beautiful homes in the city. Yes, there are some that have problems. That's our problem right now, but I think an outsider driving through the city would agree with me that we have a lot of beautiful homes, and the point is, too, that all the homes that are a problem are not in one area. They're everywhere. I mean, each track's got a few. They're all in different price ranges, and what I'm thinking we could possibly do is, for the next six months until the first of the year, if we could just get like a citywide blitz out, the newspapers, the Discover posting here at the city, and the Charter TV channel, and just let people know what we expected them to clean up their property. In fact, we were not even asking them to do the backyard unless you could see it from the side. We asked them to get the front yard cleaned up, basically, and I think you'd get a lot of response if they, if they just knew that they had six months to do it, and possibly maybe in January, they'd start getting a letter from the city that they didn't do it, and then they're forced to do it, but this way, they'd have plenty of time to do it. But I think you'd really find that the people in the city would, a lot would follow through with that, and I think, you know, you could put in there something like, "Do yourself proud and make your neighbors happy," or something like that. And also, when I was here last time, I didn't realize, there's an easel outside here at the top that had, I think, eight houses on there, which all looked bad, but if you look at them closely, a lot of them could be thick without hardly any money. You just get the stuff out of the front, like the cars that are inoperable, and it wouldn't take that much to make them look halfway decent. And one problem that we have really as far as making things look good is, you know, the water problem. Not only is it expensive, but the more and more you hear about the water shortages, people are using less water simply because of that, even if they could afford it. And as a matter of fact, the city of Pasadena, in conjunction with Home Depot, about a month ago, had a deal with drought-resistant plants. 50 people showed up to Home Depot because they had the actual plants, which you could see. A lot of times, you can't visualize when you see a picture of one, and they actually showed them the plants, and with 50 people showing up, I think they're of real interest, and we could possibly do something like that here. I mean, I can show you a house in Covina that is one of the nicest houses in the track, and there's not a blade of grass in the whole yard. Between the planters and the rock scape and the proper plants, the house is beautiful. A lady lives there by herself. She trims the plants, and I hardly ever see her water or anything, but I know she does once in a while, but the house is really nice. It's a possibility that that can be done, and maybe some of the houses could be turned over, because if you have a yard, a large yard, it takes a lot of water to keep it green in the summertime. Another thing is, too, when I go through the city, I just kind of imagine myself as being a code enforcement officer, and I think, you know, for the first couple of years, I think a code enforcement officer, the job would almost pay for itself just by the things that are going on in the city that haven't been able to be updated in the last couple or three years. I mean, there's so many things that are possibly unsafe in buildings, and like I say, I think the job, basically, bringing in enough money just by getting the things up to date, that would pretty much pay for itself. So, hopefully, we can get something going on the blight problem, and I remember, and as far as help is concerned, I recall when I was in high school, the service clubs, we had a little ad in the Post Advocate, the school put it in, in Alhambra. Service clubs, the kids would be happy to help you if you had an older couple that couldn't move things. We didn't get paid for it, and maybe it's a little different now than it was then because, you know, you didn't have to have, you know, the regulations about them getting hurt or anything. or anything. We'd just go help them in, in a couple hours and everything.
Excuse me, Ms. Mayor. Speaker's here there five minutes.
All right. That's pretty much what I had to say, and hopefully, we can get something going, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sheena Hing, Hiney?
My name is Sheena Hing, and I'm a West Covina resident, and I'm here tonight to let you know that a new cell tower is proposed in my neighborhood at the corner of Baranca and Cameron. On record, my neighbors and I oppose this plan, and we currently have over 150 signed petition here that we do not want this tower. The tower is in a residential area, and we don't want microwave radiation beaming at us 24 hours a day. It is too close to the high schools, and the elementary school is also very close, and we don't want this microwave radiation beaming at our kids eight to 10 hours a day while they're in school. This is a 60-foot fake tree, and it will devalue our property. We did not, you know, who wants to buy our homes knowingly exposing themselves and their kids to radiation 24 hours a day? We did not buy our house close by an electrical tower or cell tower, and we certainly don't want one built close by us. Our quality of life will go down. Now, I have a graph, a diagram here to show you that the tower is right, and it sends out different signals and different antenna, depending on what they use. One just kind of radiate across all around, and there's one that just beam. So if you live out here, you could actually get hit more than closest to the one here, depending by the type of antenna that is being used, and we don't know how strong and all that. And so, so you can live further away from it, and it depend by the, depending on the antenna there. Give me one second. This cell tower is sending microwave radiation, and the World Health Organization said it causes cancer. The Air Force, our U.S. Air Force, you know, did a study for 10 years on rats and spent over $5 million, and the rats have cancers. Study has shown this microwave radiation has caused cancers. The International Fire Association signed a resolution that they don't want cell tower on top of where they worked since 2005. These firefighters, you know, job, they are to protect us, and they know better to not have a cell tower close to where they work, and we don't want one close by where we live. Elway School did not want the cell tower on their school ground, so why should our kids be exposed to them? This is to the residents. Please come to the planning commission meeting at 7:00 PM next week, which is April 22nd, and do the research. There's radiation scientists and experts such as Barry Trower, T-R-O-W-E-R, and Magda Havas, H-A-V-A-S. They have lectures and discussion on YouTube, you know, please listen to them and learn And I have another diagram right here. This one right here is where the tower is being proposed, and across the street from the, I live on this side of town, but across the street, there are 1,800 students, the high schools, it's going to be beam on them, and then a little bit further down, there's elementary school. So, you know, we neighbors all live in this area, your kids go to school here. I need you to come and let our councils and commissions, commissioners know that we do not want this fake tree to bring our property value down and our quality of life down, and a possibility to give cancer to us and our kids in the future. We did not buy our house closer to towels, and we don't want one built in our neighborhood neither. I can be reached by email at CLSW@charter.net. Please contact me and let me know that you want to sign the petition and show up to next week's meeting. Mayor and city councils, we, the resident, over 150 sign our petitions here, that we need your help to protect and preserve our house value, and we need your help to protect our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. John Schumaker?
A little while before the meeting, I had a meeting with our city treasurer and our city finance director. And I want to say that I appreciate the time they both took to explain an issue to me that I've been worried about and confused about and concerned about, whatever the right term would be, especially when our city manager would say things like, when we have to pay the state, you know, that we wouldn't be able to make payroll the next day, I think was the comment that was given to the oversight committee. You know, and a couple other times, we've had different issues that have popped up that if we had to pay them, it's going to hurt our operations and everything else. And they were able to explain to me that, that we actually do have the money, which was kind of surprising, because when we saw, where I saw where it could come from, I said, how the heck did the prior city council not spend it? Because they spent everything else they could get their hands on, so I guess it was hid somewhere nicely. Of course, if we did have to write the check, it'd blow a hole of about $1.5 million in our general fund budget, because we'd have to start making the bond payments directly instead of the interest off that money that was invested back in, I guess, the 80s or something like that, a long, long time ago. So although it wouldn't be the greatest thing in the world to do, because obviously, now you have to come up with another 1.5 million, then you have to come up with, as time goes on, that additional $15 million to pay off other, you know, bonds down the road, we wouldn't actually be the type of thing where if the court said tomorrow, give, give back the money, and on Thursday, we'd say we can't meet payroll, and Friday, we'd be in bankruptcy court. It's not that bad, you know, which, which is good to know, you know, from that standpoint, that we'd be able to continue on, and of course, you know, like I said, we'd have to come up with some other money somewhere else, but it appears that we do have some there, which, which is always nice, nice to see from that standpoint. You know, hopefully, as, as we go on, you know, from, you know, the different lawsuits that we have and things like that, you know, the ones where everybody talks about the most is the auto mall, you know, whether it was $2 million, $200,000, or $2 million, or $10 million. It seems like when you've spent anywhere from what's been said publicly, 10 to 13 million, we're kind of going backwards. You know, we're, we're kind of going backwards, and, you know, we haven't, at least from previous councils, had any idea of what the endgame was. You know, for speculation that it was personal, others, you know, based on who would have the ultimate control over these, you know, very important properties to our city down the road. You know, and I thought, well, if it was personal, you know, we as a city have a pot of gold. He, who were fighting, his backers own the gold mine. So it's, you know, it, it's kind of a losing proposition on that too, you know, from that standpoint. So I hope this gets put to an end. I hope it doesn't get put to an end like the WCIA lawsuit, where when it was directed to put it, an end to it, it went on, and even more billings were brought up. And again, you know, I made the remark about, you know, I wish I'd realized that if you were a bad lawyer, you'd be phenomenally wealthy. You know, because a good lawyer would make a good living, a bad lawyer gets paid for bad advice and then pays to defend it. That with WCIA, the winning attorney got paid $146,000. The losing attorney has so far billed us about $330,000. I don't, I, I just don't get it. You know, what advice are we following? Especially considering that 26,000 or 36,000 came of it when our attorney basically committed a contempt of judge. Told the judge he was wrong, and the judge said, you're right, I'm wrong. Give the man another 36,000. You know, what kind of legal advice are you guys accepting? I know many of you are new, and you want to, you know, prove yourself to me type thing. But there is a point sometimes when things are going the wrong way, you just have to say, we're cutting it. Let's not, we're cutting it, and move forward. And I hope that we're finally at that point before we're talking about this being at 15, 16, 17 million dollars, or at least give us some carrot that says, this is why it's best to continue to do it. Because everything else that's come out so far says, you know, this isn't right, it isn't going to work, we're losing, and you look at the other cases that have become public, and the amount, the winning side gets more than the losing attorney does, gets less. Little backwards. Thank you.
Thank you. John Solis?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and staff. My name is John Solis, and I'm a resident of West Covina for 37 years. I'm up here to point out an error on one of your documents. In reference to the City of West Covina memorandum, item number five, dated April 15th, 2014, there is an error in describing the legal entity known as West Covina Improvement Association. The error is throughout the memorandum and on attachment one. A portion of the attachment one reads, whereas the city's approval of the project was challenged in West Covina Public Improvement Association versus the City of West Covina et al. The word "public" is not embedded in the legal description of the association as filed with the state of California and in reference to the federal ID number. Please be so advised. Please do not construe these comments as implying that we are not a public organization because we are. All are welcome to participate in this association. The name West Covina Improvement Association goes back to 1916, almost 100 years, and the legacy continues. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another comment. I did not plan on talking about this, but the lady who came up here to talk about the cell tower at Baranca and Grand prompted me to get up and talk. I live at, in the Shadow Community. I live within 500 feet of the Shadow Park. The city, throughout the years, has put three cell towers at the park. The city also attempted to put another cell tower within half a mile, down at the corner of Shadow Drive and Loggallis at Fire Station Number Five. I am a cancer survivor. I live within the radiation area of these cell towers. I got up and spoke against the cell tower at the parks, at the fire station, and now I understand that there's another cell tower being planned across the street from Loggallis High School at that little shopping center there. And now the city is thinking of putting up a cell tower at the corner of Baranca and Grand, which is right across from the country club. Now, I'm a veteran of these wars of trying to stop cell towers. But back in 1996, Congress passed a federal law that says cities cannot stop a cell tower because of any implied physical harm or cancer-producing agents. The only way a city can stop a cell tower is through aesthetic reasons. And of course, the cell tower companies camouflage the cell towers by disguising them as pine trees, or evergreens, or palm trees. We see this throughout. I sympathize with the lady and the 150 signatures that they have, but it's a losing battle. Until the federal government helps us, and again, I want to emphasize, I'm a cancer survivor, so I have a vested interest in trying to stop these things. I've yet to win the war. Thank you, and may you have a peaceful Easter weekend.
Thank you. Geneva Nixon?
Good evening. I'm Geneva Nixon, and I have resided in West Covina since 1967. I am the Arbor Day Chairman for West Covina Beautiful, and we are going to sponsor an Arbor Day observance on April the 26th at 11 o'clock on the grassy area between City Hall and the library. And I'm very excited about this year's observance, because we have a wonderful person to honor. We are honoring Nancy Manners by planting a pink trumpet tree in her honor as a living tribute. And also, this year, we're going to dedicate a tree to commemorate the 90th birthday of the city of West Covina. I hope that many of you will come. This Arbor Day observance is combined with Earth Day. However, at 11 o'clock, you'll come from the Earth Day activities to the Arbor Day ceremony. And I hope you all come. That's April 26th, 11 o'clock, grassy area between City Hall and the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen Rosati?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm just going to add a few things to what Geneva said. Also, West Covina, I'm, West Covina Beautiful President this year, thank you. Just wanted to announce that we have a couple upcoming events. Arbor Day, which, as Geneva said, is April 26th. Our art contest is currently in full swing, and we've reached out to all four high schools this year, West Covina, South Hills, Coronado, and Edgewood, and we've gotten a very nice response from the students. The winners will be announced at Arbor Day, and we will be displaying the artwork. Also, our annual fashion show and brunch is coming up, the first part of June, so all of you, watch for your invitations, that usually attend. And John Hughes asked me to just say a little something about MDA, because he had a senior moment quote, he said that, not I. May 18th is the police breakfast at the Elks from 7:30 to 11:00, and he hopes you all will attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Roy Brown? Roy Brown?
Item 15, or, or not 15, 11, about the cable television. It's a very key thing in the public's mind. The public isn't getting much information from the media. It's like a big void in the media. Rarely, there's something. Often, the Tribune buries it in the Highlander, and a lot of people don't read the Highlander, so they miss them completely. So you're having trouble getting to the public. And about the easiest solution is to get the commu, uh, council meetings on the cable TV. That's something that the average homeowner can listen to. So it's very key that tonight, you support Cory's motion, whatever it is, about financing for a cable connection for the city that will carry the council meetings, because this is where you folks have to make the decisions, and that's what the public's going to listen to. So you can have commentators talk about what's going on here, that doesn't solve the problem. They're looking at each of you and how you are getting the news out about the city. Rampant rumors running around town. So the public is not getting to what you've been doing. So the only way to really solve that problem is to get your meeting... So the only way to really solve that problem is to get your meeting on the cable, so a large number of people can. Now, there's some of us aren't on the cable system. We still have to come down to City Council meeting to find out what's going on. But for a large number of people in the city, the cable is what they're getting their only information on. So the media, the lack of attention to what's going on in local government, the only thing the media is covering is major scandals, not accomplishments. That's the problem. You've got to get beyond the scandals that fill the media. So the only way I know to do that is for each of you to be heard on cable TV via the television. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes oral communications. Couple items, the West Covina Public Improvement Association, we're going to bring that one forward, so hopefully we can get some conclusion on that name. And then the second item is the cell tower, which isn't on the agenda tonight. I believe it's going to Planning Commission at their next meeting, and then would come to the City Council possibly after that. All the other items, I think, were on issues of political nature or items that are on the agenda that we'll probably discuss or take input on. City Manager?
Yes, just as a recommendation, we would recommend eliminating the word "public" from the ordinance, from the resolution and staff report. So it should read West Covina Improvement Association and not with the public.
Okay, that's the next section of our agenda. Is there any comments on public comments, oral communications? No? Okay, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. We'll pull that item, that's item number five. Is there any other items this council wishes to pull? Okay, do we have a motion to approve all items but item number five?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve all but item number five.
Motion by Councilmember Warshaw, and second by Mayor Pro Tim Sykes. We will be taking roll call votes on all of our votes tonight. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Spence?
Aye.
Sykes?
Aye.
Toma?
Aye.
Warshaw?
Aye.
Hereford?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Move to item five. I think with staff described that we want to pull the word "public" out with that change to all the document, the entire document here. And it will come back for the mayor's signature, so I'll make sure that that is changed when it comes back for my signature. Do we have a motion on this item?
On.
Moved by Spence.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Sykes. City Clerk, roll call.
Spence?
Aye.
Toma?
Aye.
Sykes?
Aye.
Warshaw?
Aye.
Hereford?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Okay, next, that concludes consent calendar. Next item is the parking of tour buses on city and private property. Mayor Pro Tim Sykes.
Thank you, Mayor Hereford. The item came to my attention because I do drive through that intersection of Azusa and Amar Road quite often. And when I'm there at peak hours, I have had the occasion to see that the traffic has been impeded by tour buses in particular. Well, I won't give the company, but there have been buses that stop and load and unload along the east side of Azusa, north of Amar Road. The solution should be definitive in that when this should get to court, because we can contact the police and have them come to assist and to alleviate the problem. However, if this comes to the scrutiny of the court, I think that is a problem for the city in that the vehicle code section that we're using is referring to driving. And this is an issue where vehicles are parked. And so I think the public would be better served by being definitive as to what the issue is, and that simply that the vehicles should not be parked there in order to load and unload their bus. So I think it has, the first part should be explicit about the no parking issue and not leave it open to slow driving. Just simply specify no parking. When it comes to the parking lot, again, we understand that it is private. However, from the report, we can see that this is a growing trend in the community. And so why should we wait until we end up like San Gabriel and having a problem, and then it takes two months to proceed and put something in place to find relief for the problem? I think that it can be simply put in place that it hinges on a complaint. And once we do get a complaint, that then we can act to address the issue, pretty much like as set forth in the San Gabriel law, that the private operators should show proof to the city that they have gotten permission from the owners of the private property. And so I'm just simply saying that we're not trying to put these folks out of business. We want them to visit our businesses, but we don't want them to bring difficulty and harm to those business owners. And again, I think that we should be proactive and not wait until we have a out-of-control bus situation. We can put something in writing that can be ready for when the property owners are not able to control what's happening on their property with the buses. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilmember Spence?
Well, I'm not sure, you know, we haven't given direction, and there's no motion on the table to discuss. But, you know, I oppose bringing this back for the very reason that there are already laws on the books that can be used in the very few instances where this may have been an issue. I know I live very close to that intersection, I'm very familiar especially with the fast food establishments in that area, and I travel that all the time. And so I have not seen this as a major problem. I do want to point out on the staff report, when we talk about private property, there has been not one complaint to the City of West Covina from a property owner about a problem with tour buses. So to me, since there's already ways that we can, if someone's impeding traffic, we can ticket them, and there's been no complaints from property owners, I don't want to turn our police force loose on tour buses to make sure they have a bureaucratic piece of paperwork to show they have permission to be there. You know, to me, it seems like we're, you know, creating an ordinance to settle some kind of very minor issue that can be taken care of with existing law. So I would prefer that we did nothing, and if somebody does actually break the law by impeding traffic, then they should be ticketed by our police force, and we should go on.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Toma?
I do agree that we should be proactive, but I think we could be proactive certainly by, if we can get the tour companies who are doing it, I think we should contact them and make sure that they understand that they are violating the law. And I, so I totally applaud that idea of being proactive and not waiting for the problem to get worse. And I agree that we should do that, if we could reach out in some ways. And if we find out that the statute as exists in the vehicle code is not applicable or is too vague, then I think that a more specific ordinance may be required. But until that point, I'm hesitant to put in, you know, additional laws because they can have all kinds of effects of making it harder to find things and just confusing things. So I agree that this would be, this is a good idea, we should be proactive as a city to do this, but I think we can do other things before we resort to putting another law on the books if it's not necessary. So I would like to be proactive, but not, but do it in other ways to prevent this problem from happening again.
No? Okay. Ironically, I ran into the tour bus. I was down at the Chevron station there on Amar and Azusa, and it was, it's a turnaround bus that I saw going to one of the casinos. And they parked in the parking lot and blocked probably eight or nine stalls just behind the Chevron station there, which did create some circulation issues with people because there's no parking at the Seafood City Shopping Center most of the time. It's pretty full. So I was going to go up, but I was in my shorts and t-shirt, and I thought they probably wouldn't think I was anybody anyway, so. But I think Councilmember Toma's approach of educating the bus drivers and the property owners on the importance of safety in their parking lots may be a better tack than introducing an ordinance to prohibit it. And I will not only reference the bus issue, but the South Hill Shopping Center, we just had the Japanese cultural event, Cherry Blossom Festival. They went ahead and changed the stop signs, or actually put two stop signs on the ground as you enter the property now. And I happened to be there the other day, and it caused an accident. And I've talked to planning about circulation in shopping centers and proper signage, and what I'm seeing with some property owners is that they do stuff, and it affects people that patronize the center. And in this case, it caused an accident, and a couple people were very upset. But I see a similar situation with the bus situation. And I think it, and I've got an email I'm going to send to the property owner at South Hill Shopping Center. But likewise with the Seafood City Shopping Center, I think we should let the person know, first off, that the owner knows that they are, there are buses that are picking up people and dropping them off in their parking lot, and they may have some liability there if there's some issues with crime or people, you know. If nothing else, they're taking a lot of parking spaces for this tour bus. The owner may be aware of that, they may want the people to park there, they may not. So I, on the public streets, I think the chief was pretty clear last time that that's illegal and that they will cite the bus drivers for that. So in my opinion, I don't want to introduce an ordinance to prohibit it. I think educating the bus companies and the property owners is probably the proper step to take at this time. If it seems to proliferate, then I would be willing to look at something else, so. With that, is there any motion? Mayor Pro Tim Sykes?
Just so I can end this, because I can see it doesn't have the support, and that's fine with me, I just wanted to reiterate that when things aren't precise and they end up in court, you lose. We see that with Alhazen's situation. And that's the main thing I would like to point out, is that that issue that the chief pointed out, if you read it, it deals with driving, with moving violation. This is a parking situation. So, you know, again, it's not that big of a deal as far as when we do go to court and we lose, but yeah, I can see that that could happen because it doesn't precisely address the issue. And that's why I would like to make sure that we wrote an ordinance that made it clear that this is about parking. This is about parking and not a driving situation. And as far as the parking lot, if we wait, we haven't had a problem since all the years I've been living here. This is the first time I noticed within the past, I would say, year that this became a problem of people, after we spent over a million dollars to widen that area to make that corner more effective and to give us more mobility to have these vehicles stop, I just thought that we should address it. And then since we're here, I don't see how it's that, why it's so difficult to simply write an ordinance that specifically addresses the parking issue as it deals with the loading and unloading of the tour buses. So with that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to just make a motion that we direct staff to educate the property owner specifically at Amar and Azusa on the tour buses that are parking in their parking lot, and perhaps send a note or a report back to the council just on what the reaction was. So I'll make that a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, do we have another motion? Or do we want to receive and file?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a, thank you. A motion and a second. All those, or let's have a roll call vote, please.
Spence?
No.
Sykes?
No.
Toma?
Aye.
Warshaw?
No.
Hereford?
Aye.
Okay, that fails three to two. Do we have another motion, or?
I think we will receive and file.
Okay, we have a motion to receive and file, a second. City Clerk, roll call.
Spence?
What is, what is the effect of the motion to file and receive?
We take no action.
No action will be taken, just becomes part of the city's records.
Okay, go ahead.
Spence?
Aye.
Sykes?
No.
Toma?
No.
Warshaw?
No.
Hereford?
Aye.
Okay, the motion fails. Any other actions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay. Sometimes that happens. Okay, item 11, Councilmember Warshaw.
Mr. Mayor, as we heard today from a couple of individuals talking about being open and transparent, that's why I brought this to the council, to re-televise council meetings. But if no one minds, I'd like to have a staff report if we could.
Staff report?
Chris Freeland will give the staff report. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Before each item for your consideration is an evaluation that the City Council requested at their, excuse me, at their February 18th, 2014 City Council meeting, where you approved Councilmember Warshaw's request for city staff to identify the steps and estimated cost to televise City Council meetings on cable television. City staff over the years has worked very closely with Mount San Antonio College's television production program to determine the equipment needed to bring back televising of City Council meetings. Mount SAC has been a partner for the city for over 20 years ago on this matter, as they helped partner and develop the original system here in the council chambers and the system utilized on Charter Communications. Over the past few years, city staff has worked closely with representatives from Mount SAC when making any upgrades to the video production components and system here in the council chambers, including the new cameras, sound system upgrades, et cetera, in order to make the transition back to cable television easier and less costly. Before we discuss the options before your consideration, I do wish to share with you some of the responses to some of the questions City Council brought up at the last City Council meeting, or excuse me, at the February 18th Council meeting. First, city staff was asked to contact both city cable television operators, which are Charter Communication, and now Verizon is an operator here in our community, to ascertain the total number of West Covina cable television subscribers, the total number of West Covina internet subscribers from those two companies, and the number of subscribers that have both cable television and internet. After discussions with both companies, they have declined to provide that information as proprietary and confidential to the operations of their companies. In addition, city staff also inquired if the city could televise City Council meetings on satellite television, for example, DirecTV or Dish Network. Unfortunately, satellite television companies do not provide peg channel programming. And lastly, the City Council asked city staff to look into utilizing the current video fee being generated tonight in the City Council chambers as part of the Sire webcasting system. The city can use that existing video signal, however, some equipment purchases are needed to convert that signal for television broadcasting. This is part of the discussion on the options that were presented in your staff report. So at this time, I'll go through those options. The first option is a cable television with the current live feed and no additional staffing. The city, as I mentioned, is unable to just use the Sire video system to stream on both website and cable television. So therefore, after consultation with Mount San Antonio College, they have recommended about $7,000 in equipment costs to make these upgrades, and they are agreeing to volunteer to install that equipment at no cost. And they have, they are agreeing to volunteer to install that equipment at no cost. In addition, they are also providing a recommendation, should the council wish to do so, as an optional purchase to that system, which is what's called the Broadcast Pick Software and Equipment System, which collects all the video signals here in the city council chambers from all four cameras in the council chambers and provides it to a system of software and equipment, which will in the future allow cable television production assistants to operate in the back room of our council chambers to do the additional graphics, the editing and whatnot, should the council wish to move forward on that in the future or at tonight's meeting. That cost of that system says to me, estimated to be $28,000. So in order to do those upgrades, you have to do the $28,000 plus the $7,000, which would be $35,000. And that would be installed, again, free by the volunteers at Mount San Antonio College.
However, option one costs is only $7,000.
That's correct. Under either purchase just mentioned, the webcasting means will not change and there would be no additional staffing to generate the graphics or meetings or to manually control the cameras. In the past, members of the public have asked, well, we wanna be able to zoom in on council members, on speakers, and that system will not allow that to happen because you do need staffing to do that. So as we move forward, that's another option, which is option two, which is cable television with a live feed and additional staffing. That would be recommended to purchase the $7,000 plus the $28,000 system that we mentioned in the previous discussion, which is for a total of $35,000. Plus, staff would recommend two cable television production assistants for the operations of those city council meetings. That will allow one production assistant to be manu, or to be controlling the camera and the live feeds as it's occurring. The other one, other production assistant will be able to start inputting the graphics, the text, as well as should there be an opportunity where that individual needs to step out for a personal break or to try troubleshoot an item. The estimated cost for that is about $240 per meeting. And we estimate two employees at $20 an hour for up to six hours is how we get that number, which is about additional $5,800 just to televise council meetings over the course of the year. The final option, number three.
Chris, before you move forward, just wanna clarify, the reason why you need the Broadcast Picks is that that's, that enables you to put the graphics on, which indicate, like for example, when you're in oral communications, it, on the very bottom, they'll say oral communications, you can put the date on there. And, and you would have a staff inputting that information as the meeting's going. So that's, that's why you need that additional $28,000 for option number two, is that it enables you to, to manually help with production of the television, live television of, of the meeting.
And the final option, number three, is internet broadcast of city council meetings only, which is the status quo, so remain things as they are. It's important to note that any of these purchases of equipment can be utilized with our PEG funds. And so I wanna talk briefly about that. But before I do, I do wanna bring up one matter to the council's attention that is in the staff report, and that is the discussion on the main line of the cable feed. When the city first established our cable television program, we didn't have the resources or the technology here at City Hall to form our own cable television programming. So at the time, the city partnered with Mount San Antonio College to do just that. And so the main line feed is, is over at Mount San Antonio College. So any production we do here in the council chambers that goes out to the charter subscribers actually is, then it goes from here through our system to Mount SAC, where at their broadcast studio, they change the video in order to upload it to the charter network. And then that way, it's out, then sent out to all the residents. Mount SAC, we have reached out to them and asked them that should the city council wish to move forward this evening or in a future meeting to bring televising meetings back to cable television, would they be willing to assist us? And they have expressed that they will be able to do so at this time. They just can't make any long-term commitments. And there would be no cost to do just that where we put on the system. They would just allow the video signal to go out to the, the charter subscribers. In addition, I wanted to discuss about the PEG funds. In 2008, when the cable television system was suspended, we also eliminated the PEG fee that was charged to subscribers of then Charter Communication. What that is, is a 1% tax or fee that's on subscribers of Charter Communication, which is collected by the Charter Communications and forwarded to the city to be utilized for purchase of equipment for the operation of a PEG channel. It may not be used for salaries or staffing, but it was something that was eliminated at that time. We just wanna present that to you as, there's an ordinance attached for introduction, should the city council wish to look at re-implementing that PEG fee as we look to meet the needs of the capital equipment in the future for the cable television channel.
And Chris, I just wanna clarify that, the reason, or Chris has raised an issue of the, where the live feed is located, is that in, in the event Mount SAC ever indicates that they do not, no longer wanna help us and assist us in that, then we will have to make those improvements, like within City Hall to provide the live feed and, and make those improvements here. That's the only significance of that issue.
And the city manager is absolutely correct. And the other part of this is, is that at the time that we suspended operations, Verizon was not providing cable television coverage in our community. Now that they are, there is a requirement by them to tap into the video signal. So if at, we were to move forward tonight and tell them, you need to tap into the system at Mount SAC, they would be, they'd be required to do so. If in the future, we wish to, as the city manager alluded to, perhaps bring it back here to City Hall, there may be a cost incurred by the city to move the charter and the Verizon feeds back here to City Hall. And at that, I'll conclude my report and answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Warshaw.
Chris, on the main lead feed, you said Mount SAC would be willing to help us move that. So is there an actual cost to move it here? And if so, would that be covered under PEG fees? Let me, let me ask all my questions and then you can answer it. And I'm not sure if you told me how much we currently have in PEG fees today, so that if we decided we wanted to reimpose it on Verizon and Charter, we could decide whether that needs to be done now or, or later. And also, it was my understanding that, I think West Covina Unified was looking at the high school to maybe implement courses on TV production, and they might have an interest in maybe helping us with this or us helping them. I don't know if you have any comments on that.
Sure, let me do the best I can. The relocation, the main line, it'd probably be a discussion we would have to have with the attorney's office. Just from our experience working with the PEG funds, that sounds like an eligible expense. We would just wanna make sure we get clarification from them. It would be an expense that we would have to work with Charter Communications and Verizon since it would be them having to install the line. Mount SAC would probably help give us some advice and through the process. And then if we were to move the, let's say, the main line here to City Hall and our, in our video production area, we would have to look at additional equipment and software as part of the rebroadcasting. Because as a signal is produced here, there's also equipment that has to be called, that is used to broadcast that out to the world. So there may be some expenses to do that as well. Regarding the PEG funds, we have approximately $275,000 in the fund balance of the PEG funds.
Two fifty, two fifty-seven.
I'm sorry, two fifty-seven. I'm dyslexic tonight, apologize. And then with regards to West Covina High School cable programming, we've heard that they're looking to establish a program. I don't know if that's been confirmed or when that will occur, but that's something we could reach out to the high school if, if the council wishes us to do so.
Chris, in our discussions, you had some concerns about volunteers and interns and part-time. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Certainly. In the past, there's been discussions about having volunteers or interns, and I think that we've even attempted to do so several years ago. And what Mount SAC had the difficulty was, is that it's hard to rely on interns or volunteers because, you know, you know, let's say tonight happens to be the night of a big football game and nobody wants to come out and volunteer, there wouldn't be anybody to provide the quality production that the city council would expect or the residents at home. In addition, it seems that those who are paid tend to do show up to the office. But then there's also with interns or volunteers, you still need the staff to supervise those individuals just to protect the equipment and to make sure that the quality production's being done.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Toma.
So is the, are the PEG funds usable for anything else other than the broadcast of, you know, our city council and this kind of thing? Or is that limited by, and is it a state law restriction or state law requirement?
Great question. PEG, just so I can clarify, is public education in government. It is a federal law that established the collection of a fee to help promote access to government and public and educational channels throughout the communities. And some communities, they do a public access channel where residents put together their own videotapes and submit them for airing on cable television. Education component, same idea. You could have school board meetings that are televised. I'm sure Councilman Spence has probably had that discussion with some of the board members over the years, that there has been discussion. Other cities do televise their school board meetings or other school activities. And then there's the government channel. And that is where we in the past have had everything from city council, planning commission, Pia, public service announcement videos and those type of programs. Those funds that are collected can only be used for those purposes and it's for equipment uses only.
All right. Chris, you, you made a statement tonight that Verizon would have to make improvements. Are they required to make those improvements in order to attach on to the, the PEG channel?
It is my understanding, under the deregulation that was done by the state of California back in 2006, that cable operators, when they apply for a state franchise, because now the cable companies do not apply for a local franchise, they actually go through the state of California to apply for a franchise to operate in our community. That's probably deregulation. At that time, in the, the legislation and the law, it says that those providers needed to provide the PEG channels. I would defer to the legal counsel to make sure of that, but we have had discussions with Verizon in the past where they've asked for information, saying where is your, your feed, what information you have as far as for us connecting, because they have told us that if they aren't able to connect at, here at City Hall or at Mount SAC on their own line, they would have to negotiate with Charter to provide that service.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Spence. Yeah, following up on, on the PEG fee, which we haven't been collecting since 2008, does that require us to then reinstitute that? Is that actually something that would go onto Verizon subscribers as well as Charter subscribers?
That is correct. If the council introduced the ordinance tonight, and then it would come back for a second reading at a following meeting, and then it takes, of course, the 30 days, then it will take probably about another 30 to 60 days to show up on the bills of subscribers. But it would be both Charter and Verizon subscribers.
And that would be regardless of whether or not a fact version of Verizon subscribers could actually see it?
That is correct, until you hook the system up, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I have problems reinstituting the PEG fee, you know, for this. I mean, when we look at, you know, one of the reasons I wanted the numbers is obviously, you know, it was different 15 years ago, it was different 20 years ago, about the numbers of people that have internet access compared to cable. I mean, now, since this can be broadcast and actually the services have been able to go back and hear what people said and be able to search and all those kinds of things, I think have been very valuable as far as internet service. And I think there are more people that have internet service than have cable. You know, for example, my household has never had cable. That being said, I don't have a problem with some of the low-cost options, the $7,000 option, in order to broadcast this particular feed to cable. I don't know how many, I have a hard time seeing a lot of people dying to see us on cable that don't already have internet access, but there may be some, you know, and, you know, so I would sign off on maybe some of the low-cost options, especially option one. But I would not vote to go ahead and add a tax to every single Charter and Verizon subscriber that may or may not want this, this kind of feed. I, I just view it that way. Okay, Mayor Protim Sykes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hurford. This comes under that metaphor of an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. It's unfortunate back in 2008 that, one, those people who were in the, the loss of, of information and, and they were very upset, it's unfortunate that they didn't come to City Hall to, to voice that. And so now we're having to struggle to try to bring things back up to where we were in 2008, because it was a service that was quite clear and it definitely aided with the transparency, whether you had cable or internet or both. So I think because of our predicament, I think the best situation would be to go with the low cost. So I do support that. And also, at the same time, I'm, I'm concerned that we do have our seniors with fixed income. This can be a problem every time you, you add a financial burden to someone. They're not that flexible just to start paying more without suffering. So I have always been a supporter of transparency and I do support that tonight. And if we can do it with the low cost, I would definitely take the low cost option. I support that. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Councilmember Warshaw.
The way I see it right now, we don't need to ask for PEG fees. We have 257,000 in there. Even if we do the main line and everything else, it's more than enough to cover it. I wouldn't suggest that we would put on a PEG fee until we would come close to needing those fees. But it's more than enough, it seems, to cover a main line feed. In addition to getting all of the equipment, we would still have to pay to have some staff, which would be general fund money, which could not come from PEG. However, there's the possibility, I would believe, that maybe we don't need two staff, we need one staff and a volunteer. You might have two staff that rotate, but only one here at all times. And then we're only talking $2,800 a year, which is nothing. In addition, it gives the opportunity for, if West Covina Unified does go through with this, it gives the opportunity for their students to actually sit behind the equipment, see and understand how it works. It also gives the opportunity for the public and for all of our organizations in the city to advertise for free over the channel, unless we decided we want some kind of cost to maybe cover our $2,500 a year. But we have said, let's open up everything. We're trying to build more community support. This would allow the communities to do it. They wouldn't have to buy any ads and Discover or anything else. They would have it here and it would be out there literally every day because council meetings are twice a month. So my recommendation would be to do number two, the live with staffing, and also look at putting the main line feed, because we only need to do that once and get it here. I also believe that although the Verizon and Charter won't give us the number of subscribers based on previous PEG and franchise fees that have been paid, that roughly half our residents currently have one or the other at this point, because I think it's somewhere between 14,000 and 17,000 subscribers. We've got about 31,000, 32,000 households, if my numbers are correct. And that might be a little high, actually, because that might include some businesses. But that's a major portion of the city. As we see, there are people that show up here, but I know every once in a while, I'll go on to Glendora's and some of the others to see what's going on there. And it's nice and easy to do. It's easier than trying to get on the internet. So I recommend number two.
Councilmember Toma.
When I, when I walked around a lot in my campaign, I was actually surprised, I talked to several people who did not have a computer. And a couple of people mentioned that they did miss the TV, the, the council meetings on television. And so that did strike me because, you know, perhaps my assumption was that most people, you know, would have a computer and were able to watch the, the council meetings through that. And even myself, I have two laptops. They're not terribly great for viewing city council meetings. I mean, I think there's a way to plug into my TV, but I haven't figured that out yet. So I do understand that there is, there are people who would benefit from this and who would be more likely to watch council meetings if we had the cable option. I'm struggling- I'm struggling a little bit between, because for sure, I do support, at the very minimum, getting it back on the council, and what I'm having a hard time imagining is, is the extra worth it in terms of the extra things that you can do with the cable, with the, you know, the video and things that Councilman Warshaw mentioned about the ads and whatnot. My first inclination was to go for the lower cost, but I do understand the point that we do have substantial money already set aside, it can only be used for this project, and that is available, and we can't use that money for basically anything else. But what I'm struggling now is the concept of whether or not the extra things that we can get, in addition to $7,000, is worth it to the city and to the, to the community.
Okay. Do we, do we have a motion?
Well, I think we have general agreement that we can, I'll go ahead and move that we do out of Number 1. I mean, the additional staffing does not come out of the PEG fees that we have built up, so that would come out of the general fund instead of code enforcement or cops. And so, I questioned the extra, you know, bang, bang there for general fund money, but it sounds like we're agreeing for Number 1, so I'll go ahead and we move Number 1, and then we can have a discussion about if we go further than Number 1. On the school thing, East County Valley ROP actually does already have broadcasting and stuff, and I don't know if they'd be interested or not, and that would be something to find out from them. So, it's not just West Covina Unified, that's a consortium that I sat on for a long time. But I, at this point, I would like to move that we adopt Option Number 1, and then we can have a discussion about the other options after that.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second that.
Second by Mayor Perotim Sykes. Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Spence?
Aye.
Sykes?
Aye.
Toma?
Aye.
Warshaw?
No.
Hurford?
Aye. Motion carries four to one, or, yeah, four to one. Okay. Next item on the agenda, city council requests for reports. Actually, I don't, does anybody have an AB 1234 report? Okay, none. So, we'll move to council member requests for reports, studies, or investigations. Anybody have anything they'd like to have brought back?
I do.
Councilmember Spence?
Yeah, there are a couple items I want to mention in the, in the city manager's report to us. You mentioned meeting with a member of the public, and they requested warrants, you know, for 2012 and 2013, and I don't know how hard that is to put up online so that everybody can just see them, and then we can, we don't have to answer those requests anymore. You know, so I don't know how hard that is or if that requires some kind of action, but I'm in favor of that, so I don't know if that needs to come back. The second thing is, as many of you know, the city controller did an audit of the city of Cudahy, where they went through everything, and they had recommendations for financial controls, and I like brought back some idea of how much that would cost, you know, what's involved in that, and if that's something that the council would be interested in. The only other thing I had is that on the 26th, which is the Arbor Day and lots of different stuff, there's church groups that's going to be, I know I'm going to be at Gingrich Park as part of a church group that's going to be doing stuff in Gingrich Park near Neck of the Woods, I believe. And I don't know if there's other parks that are being done, but I'm sure volunteers that show up early in the morning can be part of that. I don't know what other parks are being done. Is it just Gingrich?
Wow, there's three parks. Gingrich was one of them, and I apologize, I wasn't prepared to say what the other two are, but it's a partnership between the city of West Covina and the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints.
Yeah, they're doing Gingrich.
What's that?
They're doing Gingrich and then two others.
They are doing two additional ones. I can be sure to share that with the city council. I think we did it on weekly, but we'll follow up with you. And what they're going to do is, on Saturday, the 26th, go out and repaint picnic shelters and remove some of the debris that's been collected over the years, whether it be tape or staples and that.
Let me just clarify the second item. You wanted an audit by the county controller?
No, no. The state controller did an audit. State controller did an audit of Cudahy at the request of the mayor, I guess, and they had different financial recommendations and other things like that, and that's something, I don't know, did he do it for free, or, you know, what that entails, you know, that kind of stuff, but that's something I would be, I would be interested in. It went through all the practices over the last, you know, few years in that city and made different recommendations, you know, and so, it's something I'd be interested in. They'll bring back.
That'll, that'll come back. Could you, at the same time, bring back our audit process now, too, to give us information on how we're audited and who does it?
Sure, we can bring that back. And I, and with Spence, with, with respect to the 2012, 2013 check warrants, we have looked into that. We, they, the information that we have so far is that there's approximately 104 reports. And in those 104 reports, they were not, they were not prepared for public review as they, as they have a lot of privilege and confidential information that's in there. We would have to be required to go through each one and redact all those. I did speak to one of the people that did request that just before this meeting, indicated that we would get him the number as far as the total cost of doing that, but if this council wants to direct me to put it on the, on the website, you can certainly do that. But, you know, I just want to let you know, it is going to take a little bit of time to do, and it is pretty extensive.
Okay, bring that back with the cost figure and the process, that'd be great. Any other items? Councilmember Warshaw?
Just took a question on that, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like the cost of what, if we only did it in the future, because we could leave that out, and there really wouldn't be any additional cost, would there, at that point?
No, the new check warrants, we are not putting that information on there, so that, so that is, it's not a problem now, but in the past two years, it is, it is something that we're going to have to go through quite extensively.
Okay, any other items? Any other council member reports, comments?
Oh, I guess there is one thing at, there's one thing at the mosquito abatement district. I mean, one of the things that I guess Sal Ammann is talking about, aerial spraying of pesticides to deal with some invasive, phase of insects, and so, that issue did get brought up. So, obviously, I will want to keep the council abreast of that, because I think aerial spraying of pesticides is a big deal. You know, some of the staff there didn't think it was that big a deal, but, you know, I think aerial spraying of pesticides would be a big deal, and I'd want to, obviously, talk to the council about that before something like that took place, so.
Are they proposing it for West Covina?
Well, no, that was just something Sal Ammann is doing, it's their own individual thing, like, you know, ballpark is to you, and, but obviously, as a regional thing, you know, I mean, I'm old enough to remember the Malathion thing. Does everyone remember the Malathion thing? I mean, that was, that was, it's a big deal to go ahead and spray pesticides from helicopters, and so, I will keep you abreast of that if that, if they start getting closer to talking about that.
Okay. I agree with you. Councilmember Warshaw?
I know that, we talked a little bit about it tonight, about the RFP process for looking at our legal. I was wondering, I don't know if we can have an update tonight, or if we can make that for our next meeting, as to how many we, letters we sent out, and how many have currently responded, and what's our next process so that the public will know.
Chris, can you give a brief update on this?
Certainly. Thanks once again, Mr. Mayor, and to the city council. The city council, about two months ago, authorized city staff to issue an RFP for city attorney and successor agency legal counsel. That RFP process ended at Monday at 5:00 PM. Approximately 400 letters were sent out. The list was compiled from those city attorney firms or city attorneys that practice law based on the League of California Cities City Attorney listserv. And so, we sent out, like I said, about 400 letters. We received 23 proposals, some, a variety of different firms. The next process will be, as presented in the staff report when we adopted this a couple months ago, is to bring back to the city council those proposals and have a discussion on how you would like to move forward in the interview process.
And, and we will be summarizing the proposals with respect to listing the hourly rates, the experience, and each one, as well as a summary of all of them together. We will screen them to identify any potential conflicts of interest, and we will bring that information to council to get, seek direction on, on what we'd like to do next.
Okay, any other comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Moved by Warshaw. Second that. All in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
Uh, we, do we need a roll call? Mr. Spence, roll call, please.
You're going to do it?
Yeah, I know.
Spence?
Aye.
Sykes?
Aye.
Toma?
Aye.
Warshaw?
Aye.
Hurford?
No, let's stay here. Aye. Let's stay.